If we can start, move through things. So, October 7th caucus and members present. Mr. Kimbrough, Igo, O'Brien, Flynn, Robinson, Johnson, Hoey, Love, Farrell, Ballerin, Feihi, Anani, Ellis, and also Michelle Andre and Danielle. So, I'm going to go through the agenda. The first thing I wanted to do is to jump to the resolutions held. Does everybody have the agenda that they're?
No.
Which means you haven't looked at it until now?
No.
Well, we're going to be busy.
Yes.
No more.
We're going to the resolutions held page, which is the last page on the agenda.
Take it all.
And item six by Farrell, which is the reappointment of Steve McLaughlin to the Board of Assessment Review, which we previously discussed. And Mr. McLaughlin is here, so it seems he want to come up. And I just ask him if he'd like to, if he'd introduce himself, say a few words about your experience on the Board of Assessment Review, and, you know, why you'd like to be reappointed. And then we'll open it up to any questions that members might have.
Okay. Wow. I'm Steve McLaughlin. I've been on the, I've served two full terms on the Board of Assessment Review, and that's, that's my best experience. But also, I have associate degree in banking insurance and real estate. I've had a real estate salesperson license, and I've always been interested in property, in property valuation. And I think, yeah, I'd like to be reappointed because I think it's, you know, very important work. It has to be done fairly and accurately. And it's, you know, people are overwhelmed with taxes, and so we want to make sure that they are, you know, assessed accurately and fairly. And that's my main reason for wanting to continue that. I think I'm good at it, and that's about it.
And as Shiva said, he's a current, very hard to find members, especially with his background and talent, to serve on that board, but, and he comes recommended. Any questions, Tom?
Yeah, I'm just curious, what's the term of office?
Five years.
Five years? And this is your second go around?
No, this, well, if I'm reappointed, it'll be my third. So, I've had 10 years of experience.
So, it's a five-member board, and so one member, one term comes up every year.
And the only time we appoint more is when we do a.
Right. We were doing a citywide reassessment, then we would appoint temporary boards, which also was good training, and we often with the temporary boards, we've been able to identify people that might be able to move on to the regular board. So.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions or anything?
I just want to say thank you for serving and being willing to continue to serve.
Thank you.
Nice.
Thank you.
Okay. So, if we go back.
There's another gentleman here.
That's the chair.
Yes, it's Francis.
Pass.
He's on the board.
Yes.
See the chair.
So, let's go back to the agenda. And you'll note that the vast majority of the items here, the new items, are all budget-related. Now that we're getting into that, and people, everyone who has gotten a copy of the budget book that wasn't there to be there?
Yep. I got it extra money.
All right. So, we're going to start getting into all the budget-related issues, and of course, you already have the schedule of hearings, et cetera. On local laws introduced, local law E relates to the waste collection fee, which is part of the budget.
He did.
Are you laughing at that, or are you just?
I just want to.
Do you want to carry that?
No.
Okay. So, what this does, a couple of things. When we, when we originally adopted the waste collection fee back in 2016, it was put in for a four-year period with a sunset, so it actually expires at the end of this year. There's going to be, have to be some technical corrections to the one that was sent out because Marissa didn't deal with the sunset on there. But, and there was also earlier provisions. We had the, the fee varied year to year, which didn't really work out. So, last year, we did the $90 fee, expanded it, and that's what this proposal is. So, what the mayor is proposing is to make the fee permanent at $90 per unit moving forward. So, she would eliminate the sunset and make the fee permanent. One of the reasons we did the sunset back in 2016 was because we wanted to encourage discussion on a system that encouraged waste reduction, you know, if you want to call it pay-as-you-throw, or something that encouraged people, you know, to reduce the amount of waste they put curbside, or, and, you know, provide that financial incentive. That's not something that's right now on the radar screen, and that's probably a discussion that we might want to have, if that's still something that members are interested in pursuing or not. I think some members are, I think some members are not, but that's not part of this proposal or what the mayor is proposing. So, this will be an introduction, obviously. It'll go to Finance Committee, and it will be, all the budget stuff will go to Finance, and it will be introduced, this is one, with that rules change, will be introduced by the Finance Committee as a budget bill, or as a budget bill. So, yeah, any questions, Tom?
Yeah. Last year, you.
There are, just back again, there's a lot of other provisions, so you might see a different, not, the basic, the basic thing is, it's $90 permanent fee moving forward. There are, it needs, yeah, it needs to be corrected for the sunset dates. You will see an updated version, and there are a lot of other provisions in there that we might get rid of, but it doesn't change what the actual proposal is. It's a $90, $90 permanent fee. Tom?
Yeah, but last year, we did bonding by garbage bins, and it was, you know, with to do with this. You know, general services, I think it was 1.1 million or.
Was that?
For the carts.
For trash.
For packers.
Okay, were those, I mean, Mike, was that?
They were bins, they were actually.
No, it was the carts. It was like $50,000. And they never extended that.
Was that, that was part of, so I, because I've missed.
I think that was to be the same as throw.
All right, so what?
The waste in the, that was what we explained, but did they bond?
I'm not sure. Mike might even refresh me, because we were taught, we were, some of that may have been for recycling, the automated recycling bins.
Yeah, they were.
But. The only bonding behind number from last year was the packers that we purchased, and that was not necessarily for the recycling thing. So, there was a pilot project that went through, and we did expand it, but I.
That was on recycling.
Recycling.
Yeah, I remember a specific, because I was saying, way in the store, we're only in bins, and then they brought it up, but.
They don't, they're stoning that, there's people going off, they're bringing the little ones down there right now.
All right, so what they were talking about, when they're, you know, in terms of moving to a volume-based system, there are a couple of types of ways of doing it. One was to have carts that you would buy or pay for, and the carts were of various sizes, depending on how you, you know, how much trash you would need. And there were other, also, in terms of those neighborhoods or areas where the cart system wouldn't work because you don't have storage. So, in a lot of the downtown areas, where you have a lot of townhouses, for example, in those areas, the thought was possibly to go to something like a bag system, where you either purchase bags or you purchase tags, and then that's the way you, you know, basically reduce. But that, that was a discussion, it never got to a point, and we were talking about piloting that system this year or last year, whatever. But it never got to that point, so we're not even at a point of having a.
I thought we bonded.
We did bond for something, and we can confirm that.
There were some carts that weren't.
Yeah.
But then.
Whether or not they actually purchased is another question.
Because there's never been any plan for pay-as-you-throw.
No.
Oh, that's.
Right.
But at least two or three part sizes, and I remember.
Correct, but they haven't pursued that.
And did they get the bond up? Is there really a situation?
I don't, I doubt that they actually did the purchase if they didn't move it, because they didn't know where to go. So, I think there was, there was just no decision on.
Yeah, and, and one dynamic of that is that any planning for anything to do with trash has been taken over by the Mayor's Committee, which is to meet monthly, and now it only meets quarterly.
It's quarterly.
Which I think is a, it's her.
It's just an advisory committee that meets on a quarterly basis. There are some members who go to those meetings.
Waiting workers, because they're workers, and they meet now, last meeting, we've had three months between meetings, and at the last meeting, I remember, the decision, we were informed that the decision was, at this time, for the indefinite future, not to pursue any things, because of social considerations involved. So, going down to different-sized containers for the sake of charging differently is in limbo for everybody.
I just, you know, I was reading the article, and it said that.
Which article was that?
It was just more so talking about the budget, and that we're currently having discussions. The last time we had a discussion, pay-as-you-throw, was last budget cycle, so I was just, we was having these discussions, and.
Well, I mean, because their DGs.
And there's absolutely nothing done on it in the past year.
Can we bring that up on Wednesday, the 23rd, DG's meeting?
Yeah, we have, yeah.
Some of it, some of it has to do, I mean, they were able to extend the date for the landfill to close, and it took off quite a bit of, it is.
But that has nothing to do with the cost of our collection, which is what this is doing.
Well, that's true.
How many collections?
But it took off a lot of the pressure for pursuing some of these other.
As it only did. The only thing that they cut back on is the trash that they take from commercial law, and that has extended the life of landfill. And the amount we get paid has gone up astronomically, so we achieve as much revenue by taking in less commercial trash.
The doomist of me, I think that's great for today, that we're bringing in more money by being able to charge higher rates for us to take any trash, but 2026, we're going to be paying more money for someone to take out trash.
And transport it to where.
I'm concerned with how you're.
Well, it's interesting, too, because the working group, they, the city actually put out an RFP two years ago.
For a transfer.
For a transfer station.
And the only.
And then one day in 2019, we were informed that we weren't going to do any more, we weren't even going to look at those submissions we got from the RFP, because we've extended the life of landfill, so we're not going to even do the preliminary draft drawings, whatever plan, on a transfer station for a next couple more.
DGs is here, are they coming in this?
I think the 23rd.
Is that what day is that?
23.
We're kind of at, and contradict me if I'm wrong, but we're kind of at the receiving end of information. We are not like a committee that's actually deliberating and making decisions.
So, the next meeting is November 6th, I'm just.
Right. So, DGs, DGs is coming, will be here on October 23rd.
The 23rd, that Wednesday, yeah.
So, that, you know.
October what?
23rd. It's on your schedule.
Yeah.
So, that will be, you know, in terms of where we're going with solid waste and planning.
I just want to make sure that we're part of the discussion, you know, last budget cycle, I told constituents that we're looking to pay as you throw. It's been a whole year.
Well, Mike, what did you say they said at the meeting?
Well, at the last meeting, which I think.
Yeah, the advisory committee has included, people who have been there have been, I was not the last one, Mike has been there.
Pogus seven.
Kathy, Dorsey.
I'm not hearing any.
Judy and Mike.
The meetings have been held on and off, but there have been some.
But that wasn't my question.
They're at 10:00 AM, it used to be at 10:00 AM.
It used to be the first Wednesday of every month.
In the DGs conference.
But on average now, it's been, wow, we actually three months go by.
But that wasn't my question. My question was, at that meeting, have they talked about pay-as-you-throw?
At the last meeting, it was, well, we were told that we were not pursuing pay-as-you-throw for the indefinite future.
Yeah. So, pay-as-you-throw is not, is not really on the radar screen of, on the executive.
Well, basically, yes, of course.
What?
Oh, for, well, for social reasons, the mayor said it would be not, it would be difficult to equitably charge people in the university. That is basically why.
And can I also do that? Well, you also have to look at that, they would also then be having to pay, with the flat fee, there's, you can throw whatever you want, for the most part.
Yeah.
With the pay-as-you-throw, you have your little can. If you throw the mattress, there's an extra fee.
Yeah.
If you throw the dresser, there's an extra fee.
Extra fee.
If you throw out more than what fits in your little can, there's an extra fee. So, it does have some.
I mean, but they have seniors who don't generate as much trash as, you know. They could say.
Yes.
So, it's got.
So.
So.
So, some of the, yeah, and this is the difference between what we're doing right now with the current $90 fee. So, that's, that's charged to property owners. When you go to a volume-based or pay-as-you-throw system, I think what you would be charging the individual would be more likely to pay, so a tenant, as opposed to a property owner, might, or if you're dealing with the cart system, so there are all those issues in there that are unclear. But, you know, I, I think what the mayor was saying in that article about pay-as-you-throw is that it's not something that, that they're pursuing right now, but if it's, it's open to it if the council wants to discuss it. So, that's.
But it still has the figure of.
Yeah, right, because someone, the question was asked, but it wasn't actually in her presentation, until the question was asked, right? As I recall.
Yeah.
And she did indicate, yeah, it's open if the council wants to discuss that, but I don't think it's something that they've figured out, or that they're really actively pursuing at this point.
Everything keeps changing, so it's hard.
Yeah.
And I think they see that the, the fee is easy, and that is.
Have they produced any research on the pay-as-you-throw as far as the problem?
There are, there are other, not really.
They've looked at a lot of other municipalities, they have. There just has been no, just still under review.
But, and that was the work.
Well, the work group, I mean, simply looks at, I think, what, what's produced through the RFPs or, or things like that. If you want to look at some other cities in New York, I think Ithaca might be a good one to look at. If you just go to their website, you can find information in terms of how they handle, they do a bag system, but you can.
But aren't we all still tied into the whole answers thing?
Yeah, I'm not sure how will that work.
Well, we are, and, and actually, when, when we got our landfill expansion, we agreed to look into pay-as-you-throw, and now that we got the expansion, I guess.
Yeah.
That is true, right.
We are an activist.
There are, there are some of the, I think, some of the studies on that, that, you remember, Mike, go back a few years, I'm not sure if we still have them on electronic basis, that maybe we can circulate, but they did talk about some options and pay-as-you-throw and some of the pluses and minuses.
Yeah, they're talking about three different sizes of containers, and it's.
But the answer to that, over the years, David, Bill Bruce was the commissioner, he went to Germany, looked, I mean, these people want to put out little things like that. He spent time there, he's going to different European countries.
Where it works.
So, in any event, so this is going to be, you know, further discussed, obviously it's going to go to Finance. DGs is, that meeting is one where you can have further discussion on this as well, and then we need to decide what we want to do as far as policy directions. So, but for 2020, you know, the only thing on the table is to do, continue the fee right now.
Does this current place station does not do the sunset?
It does not. And so, that's, yeah, that's one option that we should discuss.
That's one, yep.
Yeah.
It's permanent. Everybody here agree for a no, it sounds like.
I'm, I'm partial to doing a sunset, because I think we still need to create the incentive to look at it longer term, but.
It forces you to review the policy.
Yeah, it just forces you to review it. So, that'll go to Finance. The other local law, G, or local laws held is held. Then on the bonding ordinances, so that is items 16 through, duh-duh-duh, 32, no, 33, 31. So, these are supposed to represent all of the bonding ordinances related to the Capitol Plan. Obviously, we're getting them a lot, now we're getting them with the budget, so that we're going to try and do these with the budget, instead of having them go over to next year, which is a better way of doing it, so it's all put together. Again, these will all go to, to Finance. Some of them are reimbursable, I don't know which ones are, and these will, again, all be introduced by the Committee on Finance at the request of the mayor. Okay?
But there's a question. The mayor, several comments yesterday, I forgot what it means, DRI, but this is.
That's the Downtown Revitalization Initiative.
And he says that really to back me with the budget, how's that work?
So, we get, the, the grant we received was $10 million from the state as part of the Downtown Revitalization Initiative. It's targeted to the downtown, the Clinton Square Palace area. Some of that money, the state requires that be used to retain a consultant to work on developing the plan. Then, there was a process where the funding allocations were decided and a program put together. To some extent, I think, I don't know if it was with all of it, or with some of the money, we, we have to expend the money, and then we voucher or claim reimbursement once we expend the funds.
So, is it a one-shot deal?
It's different projects, so.
There's a whole list of projects.
Yeah, so it'll be different ones. So, some of what you see in here, I don't know if all of that DRI goes through the bonding ordinances, but some of it, you'll see it here, and as we get into discussion of the bonding ordinance, we'll get, we'll clearly identify.
Wait, was it here, $10?
No.
No, it's a one-shot.
One shot, yeah.
That would be nice.
It would be nice, but these are, these are the, they've been going around the state doing all of these for smaller cities, $10 million.
The regional stuff.
Regional stuff, Glens Falls, Gottlen's.
Well, 10 million is the big prize.
Yeah, it's a prize, okay. Then we have.
Can I just make a point? 2010119, the $250,000 for parks and playgrounds.
Yep.
I just want to make sure we get good detailed information and make sure that it's going to be enough.
Yeah.
Because I know that there were several playgrounds that are on the docket, and I want to make sure we don't get short-changed.
Right. Okay. I don't have, pretty detail on all this at this point, so we have this. One thing that we are expecting to get also is what we call the bond authorization forms, which will have more detail. We don't have those yet, but we're supposed to be getting those as well. Derek, you have a question?
Just following up on this question, I just wanted to know how that was going to work, because I did hear that we're putting more money in for youth programming and parks.
Right.
And I was just interested in how that.
So, when we get to the discussion of the bonding ordinance in committee, and I forget, if this, I don't know if this would be with the DGs, but whichever one we do, when we get to discussing the bonding ordinances, we'll be discussing more specifics in terms of where, which parks, et cetera.
And I'm singling that out, because she singled out the west end.
Yeah.
West Hill and the south end, and I don't want us fighting for scraps if we have an opportunity to increase that so it's equitable, so our parks get the same treatment.
So, this, this should be the, the source of funding for what she discussed, and then the question is, the plan is already there, I assume, and then this is the funding source. So, don't know that yet.
She mentioned also about sidewalks in West Hill that they're asphalt. I mean, people, they might be going to take the asphalt.
Yes, too. But not to put the asphalt sidewalks in your neighborhood.
I'm talking about just three areas, I heard, like, the construction boulevard, like, missing sidewalks.
We're not putting.
I don't see, I see everything about equitable, equitable, you know, one of the things I ask for, and they ask the treasurer, I want to know what the tax revenue from each ward is, and if you can give me that information, because I don't think we're the industry that can be, I mean, if you think more as far as roads.
Yeah, I, I don't think you want to.
You don't want to go.
Do services based on where the taxes are produced.
Tom.
But.
Tom, I've always heard that they have difficulty, because the, difficulty putting in sidewalks there because of where the property lines.
Yeah, I was just up there recently going through, and you would, you would have to take some private property, right?
No, the roads have a burden, it's a burden foot from the center, it's right away, so it would have, we have, when it was petitioned on in 1997, that, that is not wrong with the side of the road. It's just not like, maybe the road, you know, Russell Road is part of the county, it was 203, they got sidewalks up on the north end of the side. But your boulevard, it's a boulevard, a boulevard, and it doesn't have sidewalks.
Right, but.
But I know Joe said, yeah, I have a one with who you want it, but.
No, but not only that, we're having this sidewalk conversation, the asphalt, their asphalt over the north of West Hill. You got to go back 20 years. We mean, like, 20 years ago, when they were putting concrete sidewalks up where you are in the upper wards, they were putting asphalt, and putting sidewalks down in the lower wards, so that's.
I mean, I also have asphalt sidewalks.
We don't have the sidewalks westbound anymore. Is it asphalt or?
Yes.
There are a lot of sidewalk issues, but, all right.
Down to the rabbit hole.
We can have this.
Just come to the meetings. Come to the meetings.
I wait for that committee.
Okay. If we, all right. So, let's move to 32. Okay, 32 relates to two issues regarding marriage license or certificates. One implements a state law that waives the state fee, so what we collect for a marriage fee or license right now, part of that goes to the state, part of it, we keep, state legislation adopted this year waives the state fee for members of the active military, and allows us to waive the city portion. So, this ordinance would waive both, correct? Daniel?
Yeah. The active street, the applicant, would just be responsible that is paying the $10 to get the certified copy of the marriage certificate.
Right.
So, right now, what we're doing is we're charging 40, because they're active in the military, when they apply, they would only have to pay 10.
Okay.
And that will put us in alignment with what the state's doing.
Okay.
Resident or non-resident?
Yeah. And then the second part of this relates to the fee, which we are currently, the marriage license fee?
The, for certified copies of a marriage license.
We're currently charging 15.
We're going to.
We're charging 15. The state does not give us a authority to, we're going to improve limits in this legislative system, it's a $10 plan.
So, we basically have to make, just to bring us into compliance with state law. So, those are the two provisions. This will be an introduction, it's going to go to Council Operations, and, yeah. Do we have any people with military background or military service here?
Yeah. Those are.
Of course.
But I'm already there.
I know. I, I think, Mike, if you want to carry it, you know.
Sure.
Okay, and Alusu can be a co-sponsor.
I'm joking.
I know.
Come on, Mike.
The, the other one is, 33 is just the budget ordinance, adoption ordinance, that will be an introduction, again, by the Finance Committee, go to Finance. We have one MC, which was passed out. This relates to certification of birth and death certificates, which currently, under state law, we are capped at $10. As far as vital statistics, the State Department of Health is allowed to charge, is it $30?
They charge $30 for the certificate.
Right.
Additional $15 for saying they serve, and if you do your order on our additional $10.
Okay. So, what happened is, and so we have been, localities have been capped at that rate since 1997, I think, while the state fee has gone up, but we haven't been allowed to increase our fee. So, over the years, there has been legislation that has been municipal or county-specific that has allowed certain municipalities or counties to increase their fee up to what the state allows. We've had a bill pending in the legislature for, going back to Jack McEnany for a long McEnany for a long time, it finally passed this year, which will allow us to increase the vital statistics fee, um, this proposal, but we have to go through the, the council, this proposal would increase the fee from $10 to $15, so it's a small increase, um, and it will generate some revenue, a little bit more revenue, but that's what this proposal, so it.
But it's a big increase to people that can't, I, I, you can add the, and people, I pay people with death certificates in person.
Because, and you, you need.
Because they, because they didn't have any money or they didn't have nothing.
And like with the death certificates, you often need several, right? Several costs, several certified copies?
I continue to waive the fees, we have a partnership with, um, the Department of Youth and Workforce Development, the law says that anybody that's applying for working papers, I have to waive the fee, if that application is connected, and connection to working papers, there are different, um, rules that are put in the legislation that allow me to waive the fee, and I also waive, will make discretionary fee waivers, for lack of a better word, if I go somewhere, I struggle financially, and they come to me, I will waive the fee, but the cost of doing business is increased, and the safety paper that I can print certificates on is extremely expensive, so far this year, I already spent $5,000 on the safety paper, so the state was raising their dues, which offset the cost, but they were also telling little, small municipalities that you have to have, um, safety paper that had all these security features, there's only one vendor that I can order this paper from, and it's hard, it's ridiculous enough.
So, there is some discretion there on that part.
I mean, I guess the question is, I'm sorry.
This is also going to go to the council operations committee.
I guess my question is, I mean, if we can find out how much the additional cost is, and then put that in the budget, I mean, it's a, to me, I see a 50% increase in the fee, you know, that's, that's.
That hasn't been increased since 1997.
I, I, hey, that's not my fault, you know, I'm just saying, I'm looking at a 50% increase in the fee, that's, that's the only way I'm saying, how can we, you know, frequency that a lot of them.
If you, if you portion that over the years, it's, but yeah.
Because I feel like the state may have gone from 10 right up to 30, like they didn't crack this in, and we're still, one, we provide a service a lot faster, if you contact the state, not only you're paying for premium, right, you're paying 53, 50, but they're taking 12 weeks to deliver it, we turn it around, give them the certificates the same day, so, you know, or a moderate people did this.
It'll go to council ops.
Long line, long line.
Who's sponsoring?
I might.
I see that now, City Vol, like, we've verified. Do, how much do you charge, do we make any money off that for buy the paper?
Vital certificates.
No, in perfect world, people only get married once, so they're only paying once.
Well, it's not, this is for, it's not for the marriage certificate, it's for your, yeah, certification.
The Department of State allows the municipality to charge $35 execution fee, because we have to execute.
So, I had to get a certification to prove, from a dashboard recently, and I forget what I paid for it, I had to go down.
Better than we.
No, I, because I was going down to the city, I had to go down to the city, right, and you can't go to the state, you have to go through the city.
Right, the council.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was curious, a lot of people want to research like their backgrounds and stuff like that, is this information online?
It is not, because that information is protected by public health law, most private departments are protected.
I was able to get my parents' information, because after 50 years, it comes public domain, so.
Birth records now.
Okay.
Census records. Right, you think about deductions or things like that.
There's some changes in law, but I don't know what it is right now. Uh, okay, this will go to the council operations committee.
Okay.
Um, and that's on the, the new ordinances, and then on the resolutions, I'm sorry, on the, on the other ordinances, I don't have anything right now, I know, Kathy, we were waiting for amendments on the cell.
Yes.
And that's, nothing on that now?
No.
Okay.
You're nothing. An old ordinance?
You, you told me you want something taken off the law committee, you had a meeting with the police department again?
No, no, no. Yeah, he was negotiating my ordinance.
No, no, this is for special events one.
Oh, okay.
Wow, that's bad, I thought we killed that.
On the.
Thanks a lot, thanks a lot, thanks a lot.
On the resolutions, uh, on the new resolutions, we have one honoring Deborah Schramm, is that yours?
Yes.
Okay, so I assume this will be, want to say anything about it?
Oh, she's a longtime volunteer in the Helderberg neighborhood, who passed away earlier this year after a lung illness, so we're going to have a dedication on October 19th, Saturday, October 19th, at 10 a.m.
Okay.
And we'll present the resolution.
So, this would be a pass then for Monday?
Yes.
Okay, and then on the resolutions held, um, number five by Mr. Flynn on the Empire, is that, are we ready to do that yet?
Come, if they snowshore, we're still passing it. Throw it up on the mailbox, they can come get it when they, on their fine time.
Are they going to be here?
No, they would pass it, come on.
Yes, if they come with those show, we're still going to pass it.
Thank you.
If they're here, we can do it up front, uh, and then do that before we do anything else, if you want.
Perfect.
Do they do autographs on balls?
And then, um, the other one by Ms. Farrell is the reappointment of Mr. McLaughlin, everybody okay, that would be a pass also, all right? That is on the agenda, and also want to remind folks from Monday, we're going to convene at 5:15.
5:15.
That was on the, on, right, that was on the, the calendar with the budget stuff, so Mike Wheeler will be here, um, and what we do is, he will do the broader overview of the budget, so you should, any questions you have, go through it, I mean, that would be, not on specific departmental stuff, but broader questions is what he's looking at, uh, so he'll be, he'll be doing that, and we'll have that discussion before we do our regular caucus. Um, yes.
Is Alusu buying food for Monday?
I'm sorry, say that again?
At 5:15, we have to be out here at 5:15, is Alusu buying food?
Yeah. Alusu buying something? Yeah, fixie cups.
No, but I think they're going to take us out for late night cocktails until 4 a.m.
What's going on?
Mike, I guess.
Senior Services have been trying to do some legwork on that, and, uh, we have a $26,000 a year item paid to a not-for-profit called Albany Senior Services.
Services, right, and as you recall, we got vouchers on that last year, and we asked, hey, Sue?
So, I.
Do you, um, as long as you're up, sorry, so last year, when we were talking about the budget, and we were talking about the $26,000 that's in the budget that goes to Senior Services of Albany, I recall that we actually got copies of the vouchers that they submitted, uh, to access that money, and I don't know if that came from your office or who that came.
The law department gets it.
It didn't?
The law department gets it first.
Oh, the law department gets it, okay. So, 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 I don't know if you see them or not, or, okay.
No, this is what.
Because they actually, I believe they voucher for the money, so we were, we get asked, we get actually.
I went on the website.
We get actually asked that we get those vouchers?
And the director that is willing to come in and talk to us about what they do for $26,000 a year.
Yeah.
At the same time, I also, myself personally, attend Colony Senior Services, because they have an excellent program, and they are reaching out to Albany, willing to provide services, I guess the only dilemma is how do we get Albany people to the services that they provide.
Because they provide those at Colony.
For $26,000 a year, we could do a bang-up job of getting Albany residents out to some of the very fine services that are being offered by this not-for-profit at Colony. Uh, so, I've been trying to get.
I don't know if we want to spend our $26,000 to ship people out to Colony, as opposed to making services.
Well, have Colony come in and provide some services here, but my point is, they have a very nice senior center there.
Yeah.
Uh, but they have some very good programs there, too, which, of course, the program could be exported to Albany. My point is, this hasn't happened, and here we're, we're kind of looking over, over the fence, at a very good working senior services program, who's willing to cooperate with Albany, trying to set up a meeting, I, uh, have emailed Jonathan, I've emailed his deputy, uh, I spoke with the Colony folks who are willing, and I spoke with Monica Bolkman of the company that we're paying $26,000 a year to, so I, but I have no authority to bring them together and have any meaningful discussions on all, other than to advocate myself, so I'm looking for a way of doing that.
We can, uh, because we've been talking about trying to foster a discussion here about senior services, that would include, uh, senior lifespan, but also Department of Rec, um, and I think we can probably try to foster something that might, and with, get something going.
Yeah.
Part of it is, the $26,000 that we provide is the same amount that we've always provided, and it's never increased.
We have always provided, a number of years, and it's not apparent what we get from.
Right, well, that's why the vouchers, the vouchers.
We had to do a hell of a lot of digging to get a statement from, uh, Senior Services of Albany, but they're willing to talk.
That's why I said, Mike, we did get vouchers last year.
Yeah.
At our, we had to pull them out, but, which recorded to detail, uh, the services that were being provided, I think a lot of it may have been Meals on Wheels and, and Congress Meal Program.
But we know that Wheels is finance, as fast I can tell by, Albany County gives them a very large.
It does receive county funding.
And the U.S. Department of Agriculture.
Yeah, I don't think that's all of the funding though.
That's, that's a million-dollar program, and we aren't supporting that.
Some of what we provide might go for that, but.
I don't think so, because that's pretty much supported through, uh, USDA money.
Do you want me to contact the law department, that's, I think, where I got the last vouchers?
Okay, because we had asked that we get those on a regular basis, so if you can follow up on that, we'll follow up on the vouchers, which we asked for, I will tell you, when we brought that up, I, at the leadership meeting, the mayor's office didn't know that we actually, that we voucher.
And I think we should get proactive, not just to find out where, where the money's going.
Yeah.
But what is the best kind of services that we can provide to, uh.
And be clear about, be clear about what the county's providing here in the city, too.
And be clear about what the county's providing, and what not-for-profit churches, whatever.
Yeah, um, maybe we're doing an ad hoc committee on aging.
Uh, well, that's.
Or senior ser, or, no, I shouldn't say that, aging, an ad hoc committee on.
Wellness.
Extended life, extended.
Longevity.
Well, if you want to do it on, I think that.
That's a possibility.
Before we leave, I have one more.
The, the PEG committee is going to be reappointed, I just needed to talk to one person, and that, that committee is just going to interview applicants only, and then basically oversight for PEG is going to move to the council operations committee, but